I'm waving this gavel around to make sure that our AVI guys know that we're about to start. This is not a threat. All right. Well, it might be working for the team back there, but it is not working for my fellow board members up here.
We're starting.
Whenever you all are ready. I said this is not a threat, but it could become one. All right. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Today is January 21st, 2020. Welcome to our school board work session. And I am going to turn this work session over to our superintendent, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, as you recall, we agree that we would have extensive discussions around our budget leading up to this year's budget compilation so that the general public, our unions and others, would have a better understanding of what we actually deal with. So this was called the Budget Project, several extensive work sessions around it. We've had a few conflicts on calendars, and so we did have to move back on two separate occasions, I believe, where we were headed. But if you recall, the last work session, you, as board members, went down and actually put together a school-level budget as part of the process. The intent is that not only board members, but the general public, and certainly our unions, would be able to see at a more in-depth level what goes into our budgeting process. While some of it may be a bit cumbersome, it certainly can be broken down and more digestible, made more digestible for our constituents. And so this is the session where we're going to talk about not only how the budgets are built in various departments, but around our academic return on investment project that we've mentioned to you before, where each of our department heads are going through a process to determine, are there more efficiencies to be realized and dollars to be gained? Very proud also that this is the first year that we will have a very direct correlation to our new strategic plan, and more specifically, your new six objectives being tied to where your actual budget now rests. And so that process helps us to focus on, if we said, here are the things that are important to us, how are the dollars tied to those particular priorities? So Dr. Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent, has been working with staff. She and Rob Bixler will walk us through the presentation. I promise you, we still have four or five additional budget project sessions to go through. This is number two. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good afternoon, board members. This afternoon, we are going to address three areas.
Dr. Vasquez, I'm so sorry. Can I ask you to pull that mic a little bit closer? We can hear you, but I'm not sure if it's picking up well enough for the rest of the room. Thank you.
This afternoon, we will be touching on three areas. Strategic plan alignment to current budget, purposeful abandonment, academic return on investment, and then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. At the December school board meeting, you, as a board, approved our new strategic plan, OCPS 2025. This new strategic plan includes a new vision to ensure every student has a promising and successful future, a new mission. With the support and involvement of families in the community, we create enriching and diverse pathways that lead our students to success, as well as new values, objectives, and market differentiators. Just as the board went through the SWOT analysis as part of the process to develop the new strategic plan, district divisions have been working on their own SWOT analysis, which will guide the development of the new scorecards aligned to our six new objectives. In addition, we have analyzed our current budgets within each division and their alignment to the new objectives. As you see in the graph, the bulk of our operating budget, $1.39 billion of the total $1.90 billion, is allocated to our schools. Eighteen percent is allocated to divisions and departments, nine percent is system-wide categorical, and 73 percent is allocated to our schools. Of the $1.39 billion that's allocated in the operating budget to schools, in excess of 85 percent of total school funding is allocated for salaries and benefits. I'm going to walk you through three sample school budgets, looking at positions and looking at operating expenses and their alignment to our six objectives. The highlighted sections in yellow are those dollars that have been allocated for positions. For each of our levels, elementary, middle, and high, the compilation of positions touch all six of the new objectives. Additional information on the elementary sample school budget, again, you'll see all of the yellow is allocated to positions. And finally, the last part of the elementary budget. So let's take a look at the alignment of the operating dollars to the six objectives. For a sample elementary, you will see that supplements align to four of the new objectives: high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, and positive climate and safe environment. Copier and tech repair dollars align primarily with high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. Music, visual performing arts align primarily to high expectations for student learning and student social and emotional well-being. Materials align with high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. Next, under instruction, you'll see technology aligned with high expectations for student learning. Middle school athletics, transportation for K-8s, is positive climate and safe environment. And materials under administration align to four of the six objectives. Under categorical, media materials and state instructional materials align to high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being. Targeted assistance supplemental reading dollars align to high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. Digital device repair aligns with efficient operations and high expectations for student learning. And finally, the ESC guarantee dollars align to high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. Next, we'll look at a middle school sample budget. Again, you will see that for most of our school budgets, there are more familiarities and differences. Again, those items highlighted in yellow are positions and benefits. Blue highlights indicate operational dollars. Supplements align to high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, and positive climate and safe environment. ACE bonus aligns with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team. Copier cost, high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. Under instruction, we have athletic dollars that align to three of the six: high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, positive climate and safe environment. Music, visual performing arts align to two of them: high expectations for student learning and student social and emotional well-being. Materials for industry certification, ACE, align to high expectations for student learning. Under administration materials, high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate, safe environment, and engage and invested community. Next, we again have categoricals. Media and state instructional materials align to high expectations for student learning. The targeted assistance supplemental reading dollars align with high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. Digital device repair aligns to high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. And the ESC guarantee dollars, high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team. Finally, we have a sample high school budget. Once again, the yellow indicates dollars that have been allocated for position and benefits. Blue align to operating cost. Under supplements, you'll see that again, they align with four of the six objectives. The AP, IB, and ACE bonus align to high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. Copier, high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. Athletics align to high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, positive climate and safe environment. Materials under industry certifications, ACE, IB, and early graduation align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team. Music and visual performing arts align to high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being. Classroom materials, vocational education equipment, high expectations for student learning. Materials for graduation align to high expectations for student learning, positive climate and safe environment, engage and invested community. Music, visual and performing arts, high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being. Materials for industry certification and ACE align to high expectations for student learning. Materials under administration align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, engage and invested community. The last section for our high schools include categoricals. Instructional media and science lab materials align to high expectations for student learning. The next one, AD and IB align to high expectations for student learning. Targeted assistance and supplemental reading align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team. Digital device repair aligns to high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. Advanced placement, high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team. And the ESC guarantee dollars align to high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. We will now look at each division's budget, which represents 18 percent of the total operating budget. The charts on the next several slides summarize total budgets for each department and their alignment to the six objectives. This is a result of our initial analysis and may change as we develop our scorecards and budgets for the 2021 school year. Future work sessions will go into greater detail of each division's budget. Today, we will only look at the alignment to the six objectives. The binders provided to you today give a more detailed view of each line item within the department's budget and the alignment to the new objectives. School Board Services personnel align to all six of the objectives, and the operating expenses align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. The personnel within the Office of the Superintendent also aligns to all six objectives. The operating expenses align to expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. The personnel within the District General Counsel's Department align to all six objectives, while the operating expenses align to dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate, and safe environment and efficient operations. Internal auditors personnel and operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Contracted legal services only have operating expenses, and those dollars align to dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Next, we'll look at the various departments within teaching and learning. To begin, the personnel within the Office of the Deputy Superintendent focus on all six objectives, while the operating expenses align with high expectation for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. The minority achieved in office personnel also focus on all six objectives, with the operating expenses addressing high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and engage and invested community. The personnel within the regional learning communities focus on all six of the objectives. Their operating expenses align primarily with high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. Athletic services operating expenses align with student social and emotional well-being and dedicated and high-quality team. The personnel aligns with student social and emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, as well as efficient operations. The personnel within the Innovation Office align with all six objectives, and their operating expenses align with high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. The personnel within the Office of Chief of High Schools also focus on all six of the objectives, and their operating expenses align with high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. The staff within Accountability and Improvement Department focus on high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. The operating expenses align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. The personnel within the Office of Research, Accountability, and Grants impact all six objectives, and their operating expenses touch all of the objectives, with the exception of positive climate and safe environment. The operating expenses for the Data Strategy Department align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. The personnel focus on all of those and engage and invested community. Personnel within the Research and Evaluation Department touch all six objectives, and their operating expenses align primarily with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality teams, and efficient operations. Both the personnel and operating expenses within the Test Development and Measurement Department address high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. Grants and Special Projects personnel align with all of the objectives, except positive climate and safe environment, while their operating expenses align with high expectations for student learning, high-quality and dedicated team, and efficient operations. The personnel in the Chief Academic Officer Department aligns with all six objectives, and the operating expenses touch all of the objectives, except engage and invested community. The Curriculum and Instruction personnel and operating expenses touch all six of the objectives. Personnel within Multilingual Services focus on all six objectives. The operating expenses for the Multilingual Services Department touch all but student social and emotional well-being. The Early Childhood Education Department's personnel touch all six objectives, and they have no budget for operating expenses. Advanced Studies personnel impact all six objectives, and the operating expenses align with all but student social and emotional well-being. Psychological and Social Services personnel impact all six objectives, and their operating expenses touch all but positive climate and safe environment. Student Services personnel align with all six objectives, and the operating budget touch all of the objectives, except positive climate and safe environment and engage and invested community. The personnel and operating expenses for professional learning address all of the objectives. Personnel in the Federal Programs Department align with all six objectives. The operating budgets for federal program align with all of the new objectives, except student social and emotional well-being, positive climate and safe environment. The personnel in Curriculum and Digital Learning align with all six objectives, and their operating expenses align with all of the objectives, except student social and emotional well-being. For the next two budgets, CTE and Vocational Tech Education, personnel align with all six objectives. Their operating expenses touch high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality team. Adult and Community Education personnel touch all of the six objectives. Their operating expenses touch high expectations for student learning. Data and State Reporting personnel touch high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operation. This department does not have an operating expense budget. Personnel in the Marketing Department of CTE primarily focus on engage and invested community, while their operating expenses focus primarily on positive climate and safe environment and an engage and invested community. The personnel in the CTE Financial Services and Compliance Department align with dedicated and quality team and efficient operations, as do the operating expenses. Personnel for Exceptional Student Education Services touch all six objectives, and their operating expenses align with all of the objectives, except high expectations for student learning. All six of the objectives are touched by both the personnel and operating expenses in the ESC Policy Department. Personnel in the ESC Procedures Department touch all six objectives, as does their operating expenses. The ESC Health and Specialized Services personnel align with all six objectives, and their operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. Both the personnel and operating budgets for ESC specialized support align to all six of the objectives. Both the personnel and operating expenses for school choice services align to all six objectives. Personnel for school-age services align with high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, engage and invested community. This department does not have a budget for operating expenses. Student enrollment personnel touch all objectives, except high expectations for student learning. Their operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Compact Programs budget is only for operating expenses, and those items align with high expectations for student learning: student social and emotional well-being, and a positive climate and safe environment. All of the personnel within the School Transformation Office are aligned to the six objectives. Their operating expenses touch high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. Now we'll move to Fiscal Services. Personnel for the Chief Financial Officer align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. The Office of Management and Budget personnel and operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. The Finance Department is the same. Dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations for both personnel and operating expenses. The Accounts Payable personnel aligns with efficient operations, and their operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Payroll Services personnel primarily focus on efficient operations, and their operating expenses touch dedicated and high-quality team. Efficient operations and efficient operations. Risk Management personnel align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment. Operating expenses focus on dedicated and high-quality team. Workers' Compensation personnel align with positive climate and safe environment, and the operating expenses touch dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment. The Office of Retirement Services personnel and budget are aligned to dedicated and high-quality team. Personnel in the Chief Facilities Officers Department align with all six of the objectives, and their operating expenses align to all of the objectives, except high expectations for student learning and student social and emotional well-being. Facilities, Services, and Construction is next. Personnel touch dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. Their operating expenses align to dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Personnel in the Facility Services Real Estate Management touch dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. Their operating expenses align to dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Personnel and operating expenses for facilities' construction planning align to all of the objectives, with the exception of high expectations for student learning and student social and emotional well-being. Personnel and operating expenses for facilities' planning also align to all of the objectives, with the exception of high expectations for student learning and student social and emotional well-being. Personnel for Facility Services align to dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. Their operating expenses align to dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Personnel and operating expenses for Facility's asset protection align to dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate, safe environment, and efficient operation. The next three budgets are for maintenance in the Northwest, Southeast, and Northeast areas. All of their personnel and operating expenses align to dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. The Southeast, Northeast are the same as the Northwest. Now, let's take a look at Energy Advisors. The personnel and operating expenses with this department align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Facilities Use Management personnel focus on dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engage and invested community. They do not have a separate budget for operating expenses. Custodial Services personnel and operating budgets align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Grounds, Landscaping, and Pest Control Services personnel and operating expenses align to dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. The Facility's Capital Renewal and Portables Department have both personnel and operating expenses that align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Next, we will move on to the Operations Services. Personnel within the Chief Operations Office align to all six of the objectives. The operating expenses impact dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Transportation Support Services personnel touch dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. The operating budget aligns to dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Personnel within the Transportation Student Services Department align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. This department does not have a separate budget for operating expenses. Personnel for Transportation Administration align with Personnel for transportation administration align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses align to efficient operations. Both the personnel and the operating expenses in the material management department align with efficient operations. Personnel and operating expenses within the document management department align to dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Both the personnel and the operating expenses for safety and emergency management align to all of the objectives except high expectations for student learning. Personnel for protective services touch student social emotional well-being, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses align with positive climate and safe environment and efficient Personnel and operating expenses for the office of the fire marshal align with student social emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Personnel and operating expenses for emergency management and business continuity align with all of the objectives except high expectations for student learning. In the office of safety, all of the personnel and operating expenses align with student social emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. For the district police, personnel align with all of the objectives except high expectations for student learning. Their operating expenses align with student social emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Personnel and operating expenses for environmental compliance and OSHA coordination touch dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, engaged and invested community. Both the personnel and operating expenses for procurement services and facilities, construction, contracting align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Personnel in the business opportunity office primarily focus on efficient operations and engaged and invested community. Operating expenses align with those two objectives as well as dedicated and high-quality For the next two departments, surplus and courier services, both personnel and operating expenses align to the efficient operations objective. Personnel for facilities, programs, building code compliance office focus on the following objectives. Positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses impact efficient operations. Next, we will talk about the information technology services division. Personnel within the ITS administration department align with all six objectives. Their operating budget align with dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. ITS applications personnel touch high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. They have no separate operating budget. Personnel in the enterprise projects department align with all six objectives and they have no separate operating budget. The personnel in the ITS infrastructure department align with all six objectives and their operating expenses align with efficient operations. ITS digital curriculum personnel align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. They do not have a separate operating expense budget. Customer care personnel touch high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. They also do not have a separate operating expense budget. ITS information security personnel align with all six of the objectives and they have no separate operating expense budget. Student information system and projects touch all six of the objectives and their operating expenses align with efficient operations. Next, we'll move on to the chief of staff. Personnel in the HR and executive services department touch high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses align with dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Personnel professional standards align with dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, and efficient operations. Their operating expenses align with efficient operations. Personnel in the human resources division, department align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses touch dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Both the personnel and operating expenses in talent acquisition align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. This is also true for employment services. Their personnel and operating expenses align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Personnel in the certification office focus on high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and efficient operations. They have no separate operating expenses, a budget for operating expenses. Both personnel and operating expenses for compensation services align to dedicated and high-quality team and efficient operations. Human resources and special projects have no separate operating expense budget and their personnel focus on high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, efficient operations, and engaged and invested community. Next, we'll look at the chief of communications division. The chief communications office personnel align to all six objectives and their operating expenses primarily touch engaged and invested community. The district foundation personnel align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses align to engaged and invested community. Personnel in the legislative and congressional relations department align to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses align to engaged and invested community. The marketing and events department personnel align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses touch engaged and invested community. Personnel from the district information office align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and engaged and invested community. They do not have a separate operating expenses budget. Personnel for media relations align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses focus on engaged and invested community. Personnel from video services align with high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, and engaged and invested community. Their operating expenses focus on engaged and invested community. Last, we have the categorical, categorical dollars. Remember, this represents nine percent of the total operating budget and include the following funds. Mental health assistance appropriation that aligns to student social emotional well-being, dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment. Turnaround school supplemental services which aligns to high expectations for student learning, dedicated and high-quality team, engaged and invested community, and student social emotional well-being. Instructional materials align with high expectations for student learning and efficient operations. And digital classrooms align to high expectations for student learning and dedicated and high-quality Purposeful abandonment is a strategy which allows us to make logical and deliberate decisions to abandon efforts that no longer serve our needs or leave behind those things that don't work and consume resources, sometimes referred to as resource black holes, in favor of future possibilities. The key to making the shift from investing in the past in favor of looking to the future is to constantly ask questions, regularly examining our planning, practice, and programming. Are the strategies effectively serving the needs of our community? Are they yielding the results they once did or that we hoped they would? If not, perhaps the answer is to make the tough decision to discontinue the current endeavors and seek out new strategies. Rob Bixler will now speak to academic return on investment, a process that we are looking at for purposeful abandonment.
On Tuesday, December tenth, the school board approved the new OCPS 2025 strategic plan, setting a refreshed pathway for our students, teachers, and community. As part of the strategic planning process, OCPS has also partnered with the district management group to focus all district departments on the process of academic return on investment. While the phrase return on investment is commonly known within the business community around a balance between net profit and cost of investment, the term academic return on investment, or AROI, is not as well-known. But in general terms, it is about looking at the district, looking at district initiatives or projects and their current outcomes, student outcomes, operational efficiencies, and resource allocations. As you put their framework into place, are there ways to find savings in both human and financial capital? For employees, are there opportunities to remove redundant programs or processes, freeing up time to focus on other things? On the financial side, are there savings to be gained which could be used in other areas, say salaries, or other projects that are proving more impactful? Divisions selected representatives to participate in a training series entitled Building Capacity for Academic Return on Investment. The initial meeting was held in October. The second session was just completed in late November, and the final session will be held in late January. Board was, the board was made aware of the dates and invited to drop in. The goal was to complete the training prior to the 2021 budget planning process with the hopes that divisions could find ways to save additional funds for the following school year. A second and more long-term benefit is to use the framework when planning for new projects. It will also be used for a continued, as a continuous improvement model to expand programs that show greater impact on student outcomes, or in some cases, eliminate programs where the academic ROI is not proving beneficial. As part of the workshop series, each division and in some cases departments have selected a topic to implement the framework being taught by the district management group. This activity serves as a way to work through the process using real-life examples and a way to potentially find savings immediately. As an example, the teaching and learning division was asked to focus on tutoring. Last year, using Title I funds, OCPS spent approximately $4.9 million to support numerous tutoring initiatives which included before-school, after-school, and even Saturday school. By using the AROI framework, their charge is to see which models prove most successful and which do not see the gains we had hoped for. This process is to include all costs, direct like tutors, curriculum, and materials and transportation, and indirect costs, principal time, district time, learning community time, to calculate a per-student cost for each program. Which model proved the most gains and most efficient, at the most efficient cost? If some models proved not as effective, those dollars can be diverted to other projects or programs. This is all about taking into account student outcomes, operational efficiency, and resource
So what are our next steps? We, our intense review of our current initiatives and projects would be one of our next steps. We would look at any replication of efforts or identification of initiatives to run through the academic return on investment process. We also would like to consider laying out any new projects or initiatives in a way that we can review its outcomes with the academic return on investment process. Review of any cost savings from our purposeful abandonment strategy and look at the possibility of using these dollars to invest in employee compensation or to reinvest in student success as this is our core business.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez and Mr. Bixler. Let me remind the board that we agreed this would be painstaking detail to go through the budget. Certainly, that entire large book, we would not ask you to go through, but have it as a reference at your leisure. Very pleased that this is the first time our new strategic plan is actually codified in the budget. Where do your dollars match what you said your priorities are? I think it will do two things. One, it will help us focus in the future on how we expend. I think it also helps us to highlight areas where we may be shortchanging our core business or our students' needs. So very pleased about that. Painstaking for staff as well as for the board, but I think very useful and a first for Orange County public schools that we say this, if we say this is our strategic plan, then where do your dollars match what you say your focus is going to be? Secondly, I wanted to highlight that we did share these work sessions, if you recall, back during our collaborative bargaining discussions with our union members to make them aware that the sessions would be taking place. And we'll certainly guide them to the website where they can hear the information on their own since they were unable to be present tonight. Then I want to talk briefly about this notion of purposeful abandonment. Why I believe we are at a very strategic point is because we are not looking at budget cuts. In fact, forecast looks fairly positive from Tallahassee. We are hopeful that we will be gaining significant dollars from Tallahassee. Usually, what school systems do, unlike some major corporations, is we start looking at budget cuts when the bad news comes. I think purposeful abandonment gives us an opportunity to be extremely careful and strategic around where we would find dollars to reinvest, both for employee compensation and to focus on our core business. If we say we really have a significant need around student learning and we don't have significant dollars to invest toward that, where can we repurpose dollars that are currently in the budget? So this notion of return on investment, while far into public education, is not far into the business side of the house. Public education, I think in general, has been, I won't say haphazard, but not as thoughtful around purposeful abandonment. Instead, when there are additional resources, we generally tag on additional initiatives without looking closely to see what can be removed from our plates, if you will. So I'm very pleased at this notion of purposeful abandonment without a looming budget cut. So we can prioritize. Here are the areas where we believe we're getting a return on investment. Here are some areas where we believe we can better invest our dollars towards student success. And here are some areas where we believe we can glean dollars that can help with employee compensation. I am extremely pleased about that. So in the coming sessions, more painstaking. Each chief will be coming and going through more detail in their particular budget, and they've been challenged. Can you find some areas that you can actually look at for purposeful abandonment and redirection? Not because we have a looming budget cut, but because it's the right thing to do if our organization is to continue to grow and innovate. Can't innovate if you don't find dollars that can be repurposed. A perfect example, our chief operations officer, Roberto Pacheco, has been looking at the numbers around our warehouse. Is it the right thing for us to continue to house our own warehouse with supplies? Or in today's Amazon and, and various entities that can supply materials to schools, is it better to go that route? Does it save money? And so we sort of gave you preemptive information because we needed to let our union know today. There are seven individuals who have been working with this warehouse notion, and it's been up and down and unable to sustain profit because it's more convenient to go through other means to get immediate deliveries and quite often cheaper. And so finally, that whole notion of the exercise of return on investment, the decision had to be made, not until the end of this year where we shut down that warehouse, but we had to let folks know today so we can get those individuals repurposed into other vacant positions. But that is a prime example of But that is a prime example of should keep doing it just because you've always done it. It's a good time to take a look and purposefully decide how to use your resources and your dollars differently. And so I'm pleased at that whole exercise. Business folks talk about return on investment. Academic return on investment means we need to take a really close look. I believe the example you're hearing coming from them in the weeks to come is around our tutoring program, which is getting us the best result for our dollars. If Saturday school is better, or if after-school is better, we ought to be able to gauge that and invest appropriately so that we get the best return. If you're not getting a large response or return on Saturday school, then it ought to be purposefully abandoned. Not trying to preempt it that that's the finding, it's not. I've not looked at any data or information yet, but we ought to be very strategic around reviewing those. If the use of coaches in one venue is extremely successful and showing returns on our student outcomes, then we ought to invest more heavily in those kinds of coaches and uninvest in coaches that have not shown an academic return on investment. So this kind of healthy exercise for an organization that does not have looming budget cuts, I think is extremely helpful and healthy for our growth and for our future. Again, I want to stress, it is not because we believe there are looming budget cuts. We believe the enterprise looks quite healthy. I will tell you, our FTE numbers are lower than what we projected for income, in fact, lower than what the state pushed us to agree to for our enrollment this year. But we believe all of these exercises position us extremely well for what the future might bring, and we still believe that financial picture from the state looks positive. I almost want to apologize for the painstaking nature, but budgets are not going to be sexy. They will be painstaking, and I didn't expect to see a room full of individuals, but I do hope some folks, especially our union leadership, and I'll talk to them myself, I do want them to be aware of the process and the painstaking nature of what we're going through to make sure we are gleaning resources where we can. With that, Madam Chair, members of the board, happy to answer any questions you might have, and hear your discussion.
Thank you. So first, we have Member Gould.
So this is a wonderful thorough process. I love the book and the match to the strategic plan. It's, you know, my nephew is actually making a lot of money going around the world, working with very large organizations on this exact kind of alignment and the thought of how you're applying the ROI. So not everything always fits in a neat bucket. A lot of times, things, when you start to measure them in a certain way, and I don't think you're doing this, but I want to make sure, that when you start measuring them in a certain way, don't always tell the full story. So thank you for explaining the warehouse, because usually when programs like that are created, there's cost savings associated. The world has changed, and our practices of how we get things has changed. But when I was looking at especially some of the support departments and what you would call kind of the communication strategy departments, we need to make sure that we're also measuring the non-recurring community-based dollars and time, treasure, and talent that is invested because of a solid communication and because of those kinds of things. I use that as an example because that's every time, you know, you do go into budget cuts, that's where you start looking is first, you know, marketing and communications and things. But in my two terms, I have seen immense progress in not only the growth of our funding base from community-based support because of a better strategy there, which really directly impacts those other things, but also those dollars and how clever we have gotten with sponsorships and then marketing and telling positive stories, not just, I mean, when, and it was improved when I arrived in my first term, but Member Gordon has often shared the many times of the miserable stories that were spread, some true, some not true, but the only thing that was ever spread about OCPS. So I just want to make sure in our formulary that we're really looking, just like we have to look at the whole child, at the whole enterprise, and make sure, it's wonderful to do this while we are in a healthy position, but there's a certain structure you can put into place that if it's too black and white, you're not considering those other things. And sometimes, then, in the worst of times, when you need that positive and that reach out to the community, it's not there at all. So I use that as an example. There were some others in here as well of those support services, but that's, of course, the one that's the most near and dear to my heart from that perspective. So it's very exciting, and I thank you for all the effort because I know how difficult this kind of, what looks so simple in these charts now with the alignment, and to put something like that together, to compile that data, and to truly align all those dollars is, you did it in a really short period of time, actually, considering how big our budget is. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Member Gould. Next, we have Member Gordon.
I'm definitely in agreement, Madam Chair, and Madam Superintendent, and to your wonderful staff with Mrs. Gould and what she's saying. I think I'm about to burst wide open up here. I don't know if you all see it or not, but the excitement is just all in the air. I can't believe what I'm really looking at because I've never seen our strategic plan. We know that it was aligned to something. We knew that it was aligned to our, you know, vision and mission statement, but I don't think you all left out anything on this. There is one that I do want to just bring up, but the strategic plan alignment for every department, and then the fund itself is just one of the finest I've seen. I do have to say that. And with this board putting together the strategic plan as quickly as you did, you know, in spite of, it looked like one time we weren't going to get there, you know, but when we did, you took off, and then the staff had something to go with and just moved forward, Dr. Jenkins. And this is really one of the finest that I have seen. You might say, you know, it's a lot, it looks like a lot, but the nicest thing is, it is so broken down here. If you have any questions about any area, any department, teaching and learning, fiscal service, facilities, it is there for us to really go on. So I do want to say to you all, hats off to Dr. Bixler and to our deputy superintendent. Thank you, Vasquez. See, I was going to use a title instead, but I thank you. This is really beautiful because I know that every department had something to do with it. It is the best that I have seen, and not only just for Orange County, but for other counties. I kind of wanted to know, how did you all think about putting those areas together, those major five, you know, aligning the plans like that with everyone? But it's okay because I don't know how you all decided. But I did want to bring up one on page 57, if you can pull that back up, and then if I'm incorrect, if you all can correct me, Madam Chair also, and Madam Superintendent, and Dr. Vasquez. All righty. On 57, we do so much with the facility services, and I know that you said with the facility service, construction planning, you had engaged and invested community. Yes, overwhelmingly yes. And then we talked about planning with the dedicated and high-quality team and engage and invest in community. But every one of the community meetings that I've attended, and I attended at other schools, I've attended at Cold Birds, at Ms. Gould's, and with Cassidy Dental's, everybody, it was about, it really was about high expectation for student learning. When we were designing our schools, everything came up. No, you can't do it that way, even with the furniture, you can't do it that way. Those kids are not going to learn that way. They're not going to like sitting in that chair. They're not going to get the best from that piece of equipment. That board is not hanging right. That's not going to go right. So my point was, I know you said that it did not involve all, but is there a reason why it could not?
That is a great point, and all of the chiefs discussed how every division, directly or indirectly, touches all six of the objectives. And so in our first analysis, we looked at where the majority of the work fell within those six objectives. As we further define what those six objectives means, and we're developing our scorecard, some of these will shift, but we really looked at where do the people or do the operating expenses primarily and directly touch the objectives? But you had a great point because we had a lot of discussion on that.
Right, but I'm hearing the public. You all are not in all of the public meetings when we are planning and the facilities planning. And most of those parents, they are concerned about the, if you build it right, it's for the students to achieve. And I can't see not putting, you don't have to do it if you don't want to, I'm fine with it, but I can't see designing a building. When we design our homes, we design it for high expectations so we can live better. Okay? I mean, you're not going to design a house and not have any high expectations so we can cook better, we can do the laundry better, we can, everything is for learning and doing it better. I've seen Mr. Morris them in action. I've seen their team, and even that comes out of their mouth, they said it's for the good of the student. Everything is for the good of the student. It is high expectation that they would get it better. You know, the hall need to be wider so that, because we expect more, we know that they could get back and forth, they're not crowded in that hall at that particular time, you know? So I don't know, I just thought that that one should have, because our facility means so much to us. And when we go to those meetings, they're concerned about what they're sitting in, what they're learning, what the building is going to look like, because if the kids don't like the building, they're going to tell you. And they're going to say, we don't like that, we don't want to go to this school, you know, because the new person came in this weekend, they were saying, I don't want to go to that school, I don't like the way they look. I said, baby, they're not finished. They're going to be building that school, that school is going to be brand-new. Oh, well, how do I get to see what it looks like? You know, because I'm expecting to learn, I want to learn in a good environment. So I just thought, just in that one area, you said, well, that's the only one that didn't have five. And I don't remember seeing in the facility service, high expectation for student learning. I know I didn't see it on 57. I did not see it on 58. I did not see it, I think, on 56. And I think we need, we build our schools with students in mind. We build our schools so that students can learn better and learn in a better environment. So that's just my take on it, Dr. Jenkins, and you all can do what you want to do. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gordon, you raise an important point, and I'm starting to think I'm probably to blame for this because, in essence, every division could claim all of the areas. I sort of pressed hard. Maria's looking at me like, hmm. I sort of pressed hard because I didn't want everyone to say, well, we just cover them all. I wanted them, so how I pressed it, though, was the notion of direct impact versus indirect impact. But when we consider our facilities, it is all built around, in fact, everything we do is all built around student learning. I've got a colleague, in his strategic plan, he only has one objective, and that is student success. That is all that he will allow them to focus on. And so perhaps in our efforts to make sure we were covering every area, we were a bit too precise around direct versus indirect. We can certainly go back and take a look at that, Dr. Gordon.
Even if it just covered in one area, that the students, that you are building the schools with the students in mind, that they would be better by doing that facility. Thank you.
So Dr. Jenkins, before I call on Member Cassidy Dental, you know, I think that your role in trying to be precise is extremely appropriate in your position, and I think that board engagement here also to expand it is the better way for it to be. If you had it so broad, we would probably be here, at least some of us saying, well, that's kind of watered down to a meat squat, right? Yeah, but I think about the comments of Dr. Gordon, and I think about Evans High School and building that brand-new high school and the difference that has made to those students and how they feel about coming to school instead of the way the school was. And when we invested in them, and you say it at every opening, you make that comment, we're investing this money in you, and that's because you're worth it. I think she's absolutely right, and quite frankly, just my own experience, when my kids went to Gotha, when they first drove by, they said, is that a prison? They did. They were like, we're going to prison? Yeah, the look of the school just sent kind of a drab, scary feeling, and that matters. And to the point that Member Vice Chair Gould made, you know, if, it's, I love the fact that you're doing purposeful abandonment, it's awesome and the right thing to do. When I think about communications, the reason you've been successful with your, I'm sorry, referendum initiatives, it's that communication, it's sharing the good news instead of, as Dr. Gordon mentioned, only letting the media stumble on the bad news. So it is all tied together. Let's hear from Member Cassidy Dental.
Excellent report. Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both for sharing all that information with us without even really taking a break to catch your breath. And thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for putting this together and having everybody think about how, what their departments, how they're related to our new values and vision and mission. I have a couple comments or questions. I see how the strategic plan aligns with our budget, and I wonder, it's almost, it's almost like superimposing our new vision and mission and objectives, putting them on top of our old ones. And I wonder what it would look like if, instead of matching our strategic plan to our departments and funds, if we were to do it the other way around and matched our budget and funds to our strategic plan. Does that make sense? Kind of tip it.
Yes.
You, okay, the chair gets it, what I'm trying to say. It's just a different way to quantify how we are focusing on each of those different areas. Not that you have to go back and turn everything upside down or shift it, but it's just another way to look at how much we are devoting to each of those strategic plan items. So I was kind of thinking.
Can I help you on this and then come to your next subject?
Yes, yes.
I'm not going to take away from your time, but so as tedious as you might think this is, one of the things that we did in Orange County was we had a budget that was displayed two ways. And so what I hear you saying is, right now, we're looking at how we spend the money, and then it's tying back to what our strategic plan is. You're saying, take the strategic plan, it's the same information, and then, I'm going to say the same thing she just said, flip it, but we can talk about it later. There's just another way of viewing it. Yeah.
Can you give me an example?
So we see in each of these, if you look at the slide that's up right now, how many times do we see dedicated and high-quality team? It's in each of those. How many times we see positive climate and safe environment? So it's just another way of shifting. So it's just another way of shifting where, which of those bullet points are we hitting over and over and over? And where are we just skimming the surface?
And what percentage of the funds go for those as well?
Yeah, allocating funds and, so, go ahead.
Like tallying them under each of the objective, each of the six objectives, tallying the dollar investment?
Yes.
Yes. It's all the data you already have, just displaying it under the strategic plan items rather than under the funds. Yeah.
So I think I'm following you, but then we'd be replicating dollars because I can't count it. For example, if the facility's real estate management group kind of comes under four different bullets, do I replicate their dollars or do I split their dollars between four different objectives?
Good question.
It is a good question. Does every expense fall under each of those? I don't think each one would, or active, or action, but...
I see where you're going, it's an interesting problem to have. Let us take a look at it. It may be doable, maybe not, but I'd love to try.
So what I'm trying to see in the end is not how our strategic plan fits what we're already doing, but how is our strategic plan altering what we've been doing to better fit our new goals? I don't think that's any easier, but we have a new plan. And I, it looks like we're just looking at the way it fit our old plan.
No, the way it fit your old budget.
Our old budget. It should, it should direct a change. We should be able to see a difference with our new plan.
So one of my questions was going to be, what have we changed? What are we going to change as a result of this strategic plan alignment? And I think that's where you're coming from. So this was our budget, and this is how it ties in. But based on these new aligned priorities, what changes will we make this coming year?
Right, almost like, why did we do a new plan? If everything could have fit in our old plan, and it looked the same.
Dr. Jenkins?
So I think the conundrum is you're in between, you're in an in-between year, you've got a new plan, you have your old budget, that's all we could tie it to at this point. But I do think it can drive future discussions around your budget. Now, your codes and your costs category, some of that will not change because it comes from the state. But is there a way we could differently display it and make everyone familiar with, understand and see the difference? That's number one, I think we can look at that in the future. You're in-between years, like you're halfway through the year with a new strategic plan and no baselines. Secondly, it should be no surprise that most of it seems to fit because our strategic plan didn't turn the world upside down. Four out of the six were pretty close to what our objectives had been in the past. So it doesn't have to look extremely different because your objectives are very similar to what you had previously. We added social-emotional learning significantly, and we really stretched our community endorsement, not just engagement, but buy-in and support for the district. And so it should be no surprise that there's some similarities, I'm sorry, that the budget has some easy fits because the plan did not turn your objectives upside down. They're very similar, very similar. But I'm interested, now I'm intrigued, I love work sessions where we can hear each other's thoughts, because I'm intrigued by how we might be able to split up and display differently if this is our plan, here's about how much we think we invest in each of these areas. That's another way of saying, we may be out of balance in some of these areas. So I'm intrigued, I'm glad you brought it up. Don't know if I have a solution, but we'll work on it.
Yeah, and I was thinking that information was already gathered in here, but now I understand there aren't dollars assigned to this. So it gets more complicated, yeah. Initially, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and my second point is, when you're going through the return on investment and the abandonment process, that you not just look at programs from dollars and like what administrative costs are, but involving the people who are doing those things. So the teachers or whoever is involved, to include their perspectives because they are often, they often have strong opinions about what is a waste of time or what could be changed just a little bit to be more effective. So I think that's important to make sure that they are not just invited to participate, but we really have a process to seek and really involve the people who are doing these things in the process.
Dr. Jenkins?
So I want to be careful not to overpromise or overcommit because in some instances, if the data is clear that the way we've been doing something in particular is either harmful or producing no results, then you're going to have to rely on the data more so than emotions. I will tell you now, if you talk to folks who happen to work in the warehouse, they might be passionately insistent that it is the best way to get materials to school, but the data doesn't support that. And so in instances where we can take input based on those who are doing the work, we absolutely will. But if the data is overwhelmingly supportive of abandonment of something that we've been doing for 25 years with zero outcomes for students, then we have to be willing to make some of those difficult decisions. I can tell you, because we've gone through budget cuts in years past, we shouldn't have that much, that much excess lying around that has zero impact. But it has to be based on more than individual opinion or emotional attachment to a program. I can think of one in particular that was entrenched, and we simply couldn't afford it anymore. And when we looked at the results, it was, and it was a student-based program. I'm not going to say it out loud, if you want to know, I'll tell you later. But it was a student-based program, and folks were saying, "Oh, no, this is good for children, you can't let it go." The numbers, the data, did not support the investment. And so I want to be strategic, I want to be certainly rational around those decisions, taking input from individuals who have opinions or have any, even anecdotal. Don't all have to be quantitative, it can be qualitative information around programs. But if we have numbers that say, "This is not helping our children, and we can better invest," I love using the example of Saturday School because I don't know what those outcomes will be. That's an area that we're studying. But let's say the example comes out to say, "You know what, Saturday School's not getting the bang for the buck." That after-school and push-in tutoring during the school day is getting the best bang for our buck. And then individuals say, "But we love Saturday School, and it's good for our children, and it's..." There may be emotional ties to Saturday School. Let me just say, the reverse may be true. There may be emotional ties to say, "We've got to keep doing the push-in and after-school tutoring, and Saturday School has proven to have the best outcome for children." Somewhere, the data has to help us make the best decision. That's what purposeful abandonment is all about. You try to take away the emotional side of it, input absolutely, but the emotional decision-making has to be replaced by data-supported decision-making. I love those examples because I don't know how they'll turn out, and I know we're studying both of them, so I just throw that in there.
Dr. Castor Dental?
Take input as much as possible.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand your point, Superintendent Jenkins, but I want to just make sure that the, like, I'll just use teachers, the teacher's perspective, if we're looking at programs that are happening in the classrooms or in the schools, that we are listening to their perspectives, even if it's not necessarily emotional. I mean, I see it as professional. So they have a professional view of what their investment to make it work or if it's a waste of time. I think that that information, although qualitative, can really be informative because not everything that matters can be measured. So I just want to make sure that we are looking at the whole picture when we're looking at a program or an effort before we make that decision, that we are really looking at personal costs or whether it's taking away from another program or what teachers might think is beneficial. So there, I still want to go into and involve those people who are doing the work. Not necessarily, "Do you want to continue working in your job?" But in your job, is this effective? Not just what is the, what does an I-ready score look like? But, or how is this affecting their scores? But does it affect the child's sense of well-being? I mean, there's other things that we can look at that are part of that decision-making.
So if I can interject, and then I'm going to call on Dr. Jenkins, but I think that we're having two different conversations. I'm going to step in as referee, although the last time I did this, it didn't end well. It was with my kids and, anyway. Dr. Jenkins is talking about purposeful abandonment. That's getting rid of a program. And I think, Dr. Castor Dental, what you're talking about more has to do with programs and expectations that we have on teachers and placing more responsibility or not being willing to abandon a program and not taking teachers' considerations. I think that they're two very different situations. So in terms of purposeful abandonment, I think, yes, we want to hear all voices, but at the end of the day, if a program has not demonstrated outcomes, no matter how much somebody might like the program, we need to think of the children first. I think what you're talking about, Dr. Castor Dental, is programs or expectations we have on teachers that may have a cost to the teacher and a cost to their ability to spend their time more effectively in the classroom because they're doing something else we think is beneficial? Is that what you're referring to? Or are we still on purposeful abandonment?
No, I see them as related. I don't see it as just, what is the investment by the teacher? But ask the teacher, in this program, if we're looking at that type of program, do you see a benefit? Do you see an outcome for the children? Or is it, do you, so I, I don't see them as different. I still, and it's not just the cost or personal cost or workload to the teacher, it's the teacher's vantage point of seeing, has this helped the children? Is there an outcome? And is it, it's not always driven by numerical or quantitative data. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture.
Is there an outcome that's not measurable, that we might not be picking up in the data?
Sure, there's lots of outcomes that are not measurable, that are valuable.
No, 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 I'm understanding what you're saying. It may be a sense of well-being, it may be other things that that student has gotten from a program that we're not seeing their grades improving, but that teacher, face-to-face with that student, sees that student's attitude is improving, they feel better about themselves, and sees value in that program.
Whatever that, whatever else can be shared, I just want to make sure that we have a fuller picture when we're deciding to abandon a program or not. So.
Dr. Jenkins?
I don't think we were that far apart in our opinions. We've always engaged teachers around curriculum decisions. Not every teacher can be a part of a committee or a part of a selection team, but we will certainly continue to engage our teachers around important decisions for our students. And I think it's important as well that we will always communicate the why and the data and the background around decisions that have to be made. What we learned when we had to stop a particular program that was extremely expensive and not producing outcomes was that because there were attachments to it and different opinions, is we needed to do, and this has been a few years back, we need to do a better job of sharing the data and communicating why. But I can assure you, we will always engage teachers around curricular decisions, things that happen in the classroom, that's been our practice, we'll continue that.
Okay, anything else, Dr. Castor Dental? Okay. Okay, boy, I'm up next, and I'm trying to remember what it was I wanted to say at this point. You know, one thing I do want to ask for, this is really valuable information, and it's amazing because when you look through the book, it's like, yeah, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense, that makes sense. And it's easy, I think, to look through this book and not understand the work that went into it. I think each board member that spoke in it said that. So thank you, I actually thought maybe you had done this years, you know, year after year, and so it was kind of a template. So when I think that you all put this together this year, a tremendous amount of work that went into that. So thank you. And I think it also helps us as we move into next year's budget as kind of a baseline. I think the question that Dr. Castor Dental asked about putting, trying to look at it from the opposite perspective and trying to get a sense of how our dollars are allocated is going to be helpful to us also for next year. The one thing that I want to ask, if we can include this in one of our upcoming work sessions, is some way for us to see and understand all the dollars that are operational dollars that could be used for salaries? And what percentage are being used for salaries? And what percentage of them are being used for something else? And what is that something else? So that as we struggle, and hopefully this does get easier, but as we recognize the value of our teachers, our support personnel, that we know where those dollars are, we have that opportunity to make that trade-off as part of our budget. And one example comes to mind, and that is a really tough decision for us. And I think that, talking to John Morris later and Roberto, I'll probably find out there's a lot more to this, but this is just a rudimentary example. When we have portables, we have, we buy some portables, we rent some portables. And if there weren't a really financial reason to do one or the other, if it were equal, well, if we rent portables, it's an operational cost, and if we buy them, it's a capital cost. And so just that simple decision makes a difference on how many operational dollars we have or how many capital dollars. Tough decision for people like member Gould and myself and member Byrd, who have, and I say myself because I, for years, have understood the inequality of children in portables, just like the inequality of children in our older schools that needed to be rebuilt, the inequality in technology, we look at all these inequalities. So it's a tough decision, but at the same time, that's just a simple example of where we have some choices of whether we're going to have more capital dollars or more operating dollars. Within operating alone, there may be some trade-offs that the board just will want to know about as we go through this process. So if there's a way, I know it's not easy, but you guys put this together, so shame on you. Now I have so much confidence in your ability. Great, thank you. Next, let's hear from member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a few things. First off, thank you, this was a lot of work and a lot of slides. So thank you for all the hard work that your staff and everybody put into this presentation for us this evening. I want to touch base on a few things that I heard Dr. Castor Dental, member Castor Dental, mention, and also the chair, because I agree. I love what we all did, and I also recognize that a lot of the buckets or whatever you want to call them that we went through tonight are actually mandatory or they're in categoricals, so we don't have a choice. So I appreciate that we can actually take those categoricals and try to match them to our strategic plan. But really, if we couldn't, too bad, like, we don't have a choice, we have to spend these dollars these ways. So what I'm really interested in moving forward, and I think that we've touched on it, and I think that this is the direction that we're headed, is kind of what member Castor Dental said, you know, do we have an area, do we have a bucket, do we have a silo in those flexible dollars? Because I'm, as the chair mentioned, very interested in those flexible dollars that we have. We've identified, we've identified buckets where we know from the FEFP that we have flexibility in what we do with those dollars. What are we doing with those dollars? Are we using them to the best of our ability? And are we using those limited resources to support our strategic plan to the best of our ability? And then do we have buckets or areas where we're in conflict with one another? Because I would think, without talking to the teachers, that in areas that we might identify as high expectations for student learning, that almost could be impactful to social-emotional wellness. So can we look at or maybe identify those areas where we have conflict, make sure we don't have conflict, and in talking to teachers, fix that conflict? Because that's, that would be an important or a priority for me to look at that. And then just, yeah, just detailing it, you know, looking, identifying the flexible dollars, adjusting those adjustable dollars, and making sure that they do align with our new strategic plan. That's what I'm, that's kind of the deep dive that I'm looking for. I think that's a deep dive that the board's looking for, and especially our teachers are looking for, that they can comment and come and contribute to. But thank you.
And I believe that in your future budget work sessions by the individual chiefs, you will get a better picture of which of those dollars are flexible and which ones are fixed that we have to spend in that arena.
So maybe if we get that in each presentation, maybe then there could be a cumulative report or presentation of that would be helpful. Then we'll see it piece by piece, and then we'll see it in its totality. Member Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to reiterate what my...
I just want to reiterate what my fellow board members have said about our, our new emphasis on social-emotional learning and the fact that that is one of our new objectives with our new strategic plan. And I think that, as we decided when we were working on that strategic plan, that we are no longer at a point where we can, you know, ignore it, that this is an issue that needs a lot of attention. And so, I think that's why we decided to do it. So, I think with it being so important, that I think what we're, I'm reiterating what they're saying, but I think what we're, what we're saying is that though in the past, we may have only, you know, really evaluated where we're spending our money and what we're, the programs we're doing on the, you know, quantitative data that we get from those results, I think what we're saying is that now we no longer want to just, we no longer want to evaluate our programs just on that. We want to make sure that what we're doing is still achieving, having high expectations for kids, but at, not at the risk of their mental health and their social well-being because our kids are struggling so bad. They just, they really are, and something, it's, it's something going on. It, you know, we've been pushing, pushing, pushing our kids for so long, and I know that we need to, and I know that our state is demanding it, I know there's so many things, but I think this board has made it a point to say that it is important for us to make sure that our children are healthy mentally and emotionally. And so, I think that, um, that that's kind of something that I, you know, when I was looking at all this, I was thinking, you know, are we, are we making sure that we're really now going back and checking that with all of the things that we do every day with our kids? So, I think, um, that's just something I wanted to reiterate a little bit. And again, thank you for this, this is, I know this is a lot of work by all of you and all the departments, so, um, it's really good and we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any more comments? I have a question, Madam Chair, to do with that, sometimes, as when you talk about-
About qualitative outcomes. I think in, in my mind, I was seeing qualitative outcomes as not just academic outcomes, but I think this conversation, I think we all have to be on the same page. So, when you're talking about qualitative, we, we're not just talking about academic performance, we're looking at, at other metrics as well. Okay? Okay?
That's correct. So, quantitative, pretty easy to roll up the numbers and the data around student achievement. Qualitative, a little bit more anecdotal in nature, but certainly needs to be considered as well. But, but the driving force, the easiest data to get to is around the quantitative. But I, I acknowledge what board members have said, we've got to gather more qualitative data as well.
Yeah.
From teachers, from students, from actual instances that happen among our young people, especially in the social-emotional area, not a whole lot of pure numbers to gather there.
Yeah, this is true. All right, thank you. But I, I say, I, I echo your comments, it's extremely important. I, I don't want, I don't want a brain surgeon operating on me, God forbid I ever need one who's-
You don't want a brain surgeon?
Well, I, if I have one, I had, and actually, I cut myself off in the middle of my sentence. Maybe I need a brain surgeon. I don't want a brain surgeon operating on me that's not well-adjusted, you know, that's not emotionally stable. So, if our children are not emotionally stable and well-adjusted, then at the end of the day, not a whole lot else matters. So, it really is a key pivot, you know, starting point for us. And I think that there are a few people that are going to understand that or know that better than teachers in the classroom. So, it is very important that we have their input every step of the way. So, thank you for that contribution as well. With that, this, we have nothing else? All right, then this meeting is now adjourned.